Good evening.
Hello, my name is Ted Nelson. Nice to meet you.
A pleasure.
Yeah, we met last week.
That's right. Last meeting. Good memory.
Either one of these.
No, I'm over here.
Alright.
Instead of out there.
Cool.
It's blue or white, whatever it is. You hit the little phone thing. Turns green. Now it's record.
Okay.
The microphone is working.
Alright. Well, it's a little early because we've had issues with the system. Just leave it on.
Yeah.
And then you can actually go in to YouTube and edit down. You know, cut off.
Okay. That's it.
Alright.
In reverse. You're now done. You go in.
I'll throw a hail Mary your way and call yourself a Jew. So I like your timeline. Yeah, and what's in progress and the green, yellow, red. So, you know, I like that. And I like the look, our outlook, the task and everything.
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, I'm assuming, yes, yes, he did. Yes. Yep, alright. Yeah, appreciate you being here.
Hopefully your first time on the agenda?
Hey, unlock the door.
You can sort of walk right in. I've been doing.
There's a lot of it.
There is.
I got the emails, so I reviewed some of them already.
I just need to know.
I'm going early. My daughter's.
Oh, um, yes, yeah.
Alright, I'll send those. Yeah, I'll text it to you then.
Okay. Yes, no, don't.
You do, you're right. So, okay, great. So, how was things? How are you all in one piece? How are you all in one piece? How are you all in one piece?
Well, yeah, I had a three down and I had.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, here. Your ticket. I've seen those. I'm gonna be probably plugging out anyway.
How are you today?
Ted's at the end.
Yeah.
I'm gonna take this one. Jim. You might as well sit next to Jim.
Right.
You the secretary.
I didn't, that's something, well.
Okay, FYI, okay, thank you. Appreciate it.
Hello. Just trying to catch up here.
Nice to meet you too.
We're down to the last one of those copies. Can you make more?
Uh, Jim, he was, yeah, he was, he's around here. He was getting them, he was making them.
Alright.
He might be doing them, doing that right now. Had office in there, yeah. Passing them around.
Nice to meet you, Kevin. Nice to meet you.
There's more copies. He's got copies.
Agendas?
Yeah, they're asked.
Yeah.
You got them.
Thank you. Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
One was of the other.
Hmm.
Yeah, I got my, uh, my daughter's.
Who else has an agenda?
Team is about four or five of us.
Hi, Bill.
Steven Norris.
Yeah. You know where Jerry is?
Just giving the.
The new cameraman.
Oh, last minute tips.
Okay. Like I said. Okay, alright, okay. Thanks, Joe.
Did everybody get handouts? I was running out of time taking copies. There are some more chairs out in the hall.
Can you hand out somewhere?
At six o'clock, let's stand for the pledge.
The United States of America, and to the Republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Local, uh, Turex, Nelson?
Yes.
Clock?
Here. He's over there.
O'Connor.
He's hiding. Okay, um, first, public input. Just let you know that, that this public input doesn't necessarily have to do with a hearing. You can certainly include your concerns, but as we move into public hearing, you'll have an opportunity to talk. Give us your input after Mr. Norris talks to us about his plans for the, uh, special use permit. Okay, so this is open for you folks and thank you all for coming. And we appreciate that sometimes we're kind of sitting here by ourselves and, uh, so is there anything anybody would like to give us input on? Okay, see, then we'll close it. Little approval agenda. There'll be a couple of changes here. John Kern, Kern, Kernmer, uh, could not attend, so we'll strike him under the new business. Is there anything else? Add, delete? Or make a motion that we approve with the change of taking John off?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
I.
And opposed? Okay. Minutes of April 21st. I didn't see anything in there that needed, needed adjusting, so I'll take the motion that we approved the minutes.
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
I.
We opposed. We also ask for conflict of interest amongst ourselves in case, uh, somebody was related to Mr. Norris that may, may not, uh, be, um, what shall we say, um, comfortable with inputting, which I don't think we have any of that, but I like to make sure we're above board if there's any concerns about, about conflicts of interest. So we will call the public hearing together at 6:04. Mr. Norris, could you please give us an input on what you're planning on doing? And we'll have some questions and then obviously the audience will have some questions and concerns.
Okay. Should I just sit here and do it?
Stand, make, make sure everybody can hear you in the back.
Okay, okay. Well, if, if it's alright with you, I just would like to kind of go through my application which I presented and just make sure we're, I understand and clear on that. We'll start with the general background on the property. Um, up until the 1940s, there was a grocery store, a gas station on the property. And then for the last 45 years, uh, the property was used by Mr. Goke as a mobile home park and as related construction operation. And when I moved the property, um, my plans were to continue the uses as Mr. Goke had used. Uh, general property description, um, there's, uh, two shops, one's 40 by 70, uh, with five, five large overhead doors that was used to store and maintain his equipment and vehicles. And we bought it, there was also construction supplies and tools in the big shop. And then in the smaller shop, it looked like he used that to maintain and repair vehicles. It was equipped with, uh, with a, uh, hardline air compressor and work benches and tool storage shelves, um, as well as the one in the apartment. Uh, main residence immediately behind those shops, um, was his residence, but also had a, a 16 by 32 office. And I've included pictures of, of the sign that directed the public up to the front door where he had the office. And the office was right inside the front door, there's a picture of the office, as it was when I, when I bought it. Um, and then the, the property also has, uh, eight mobile home lots, which are, three of them are, are, have mobile homes on them. Uh, five of them are just ready for mobile homes.
Are those currently leased?
The, the three are, are, yep, they're, yeah, people are living in the three. Um, the earliest zoning designation we could find on this property was from 1980 when Mr. Goke applied for a special use permit for the mobile home park on December 5th, 1980. Uh, the zoning classification was designated commercial on the application. Uh, that application was signed by the township supervisor, supervisor Barbara Dow, the township zoning administrator Wesley Wilson, and the township clerk Linda Wilson. And, uh, page three is just a picture of that, of that permit that was issued in 1980. Uh, the next, uh, tract that we can find of, of the zoning is still zone commercial in 2008. And this is when Holm, Holstead Township managed this township. And, uh, they listed it, uh, in their zoning map as commercial. And then, uh, the current township zoning map included on page one of your ordinance that was adopted in 2020, also shows this property being zoned commercial. And that, that, a picture of that map is on, uh, page five. And I'll just take that picture out of your, um, zoning ordinance, that's what we keep in front there. Um, we also, also have a letter, this was from your, uh, zoning administrator, but he just forwarded it from the, your tax assessor.
Copy of that.
And, uh, most pertinent parts of that, this was, this was sent to, uh, my realtor, uh, Trent Sims here. When the property was listed, we saw, because it was listed as commercial property, sign out said front was commercial. And, uh, he had, he had reached out to the township to confirm that it was commercial. And, uh, Gunnar Brown, your tax assessor, and I highlighted the, he said, he said, he has it classified as, we'll see, just because I have it classified as residential, it can still be zone commercial. And then class and zoning do not have to match. Zoning is what is allowed, class is according to value. So he was taxing it, he put on a tax rules as, as rural, because that's how Mr. Goke, I don't know, came in and asked for this renting or whatever, if you slow down his operations. But he did not change the zoning. The zoning wasn't changed. Um, I did get a correspondence from the township suggesting perhaps Mr. Goke had, had come in and, and asked for a zoning change. And, uh, this was, uh, three or four months ago, and I became aware of that possibility, but I, I don't think that there have been any minutes found or any meetings where there actually was ever a zoning change. So I think it's pretty well established that the property is zone commercial. I was never a public hearing to change it to, um, residential. Then, uh, let's bring me to your, your standards of decision when you're issuing a special use permit. Um, and so I just went by your standards out of your book and help us go through them, um, uh, from your section 12.4, standards of decision for special use permits. See, according to the township zoning map, the pass permits issued to property is own commercial. Contractor's yard is allowed, is an allowed use in a commercial district. And essentially that's what I'm, I'm wanting to use it for is as a contractor's yard. Mr. Goke used that area around the, uh, where the pole buildings are, the shop buildings and the big pavement. And then he had the, uh, house trailer to the west of that. The applicant is asking to continue the use established by Mr. Goke and historically allowed by the township on this property. B and I, these A, B, C, D's are just on, these are out of your ordinance. The proposed use of the property is no different than how it has been used up until its recent purchase. The applicant is asking the township to officially recognize the uses that are by Michigan zoning law grandfathered for the property. I.e. construction property, mobile home park, by issuing a special use permit for these uses that have been approved and condoned by the township on this property with a, of objection from the township at any time. Proposed uses will involve, so this is specifically what I'm, and, uh, parking equipment related to Scott Norris and construction on the property, trailers and trucks and some excavation equipment. Storing and repairing equipment owned by Scott Norris in the two shop buildings on the south portion of the property, fronting on our highway. Uh, placing a Scott Norris construction yard sign at the entrance. Uh, maintaining and operating the existing mobile home sites. That's, that's what I'm planning on doing, those, those four things. Proposed use will be maintained so as not to diminish the opportunity for surrounding properties to be used and developed as zones. I'm not making any changes, so I don't think that affects it. Special land use will not place any additional demands on the fireplace or other public resources as the property, as the permit, is not allowing any new use that has already been in place for many years. On the entrance, the property has 300 plus feet of frontage on our highway, Class A highway, served by its own water and sewer system and refuse collection and disposal services. G, a special use permit complies with all the special standards required on the ordinance applicable to it. The overarching standard being these uses all predate the zoning ordinance, so are by law transferred with the property. A special use permit is simply recognized, recognizing the existing uses. Section 13.4, site plan requirements. A driveway permit is not needed to be issued as a commercial entrance is already in existence and does not require modification. The buildings are already existing on the property, so don't need any building permits. The natural features of the property will be retained as, as they are. We are not proposing any screening or additional landscaping. I can't remember what five was, but it didn't apply at all to what we were doing. A six, all of the existing buildings are accessible by emergency vehicles. A seven, the use of the land is not changing at all from how it has been used in the past. So it's by, so by definition, encourage the use of the lands in accordance with the character and adaptability. It avoids overcrowding of population, creates no new congestion on public roads and streets. It places no additional burden on systems of transportation, a site disposal, safe adequate water supply, education, recreation, or other public requirements. It requires no expenditure of public funds. Uh, it has no impact on property values and natural resources, it's not changing anything. Uh, finally, the property, property use meets the township overall future plan to use, utilize on our highway corridor for commercial uses. This is demonstrated by the multiple commercial properties both east and west and directly across the street from this parcel on our highway. Eight, there is no new construction being proposed, or, so there is no need for plans to handle any newly created stormwater discharge. Um, that's, that's all of the standards that are in your ordinance. That's what I have there.
Yeah, uh, thank you for going through those, some of those, we had some of those we didn't have, so we will actually go through those again as a board. What is your plan for on the other side of Stanley Creek?
Was this, was that?
Initially, you were talking about sort of a gravel pit or something.
Yeah, that was, that, that has been with John. And then when, when I brought up gravel pit to the, to the board, uh, I didn't, I didn't realize that they were thinking, you know, uh, processing gravel or mining gravel. I have no, no plans for that and never did. Um, we would like to use it for, uh, our excavation division, we do landscaping. And so oftentimes we'll have, have, uh, boulders or stone that, that's left over from a job and I just, I need a place to put it until we need it for another job. So it would be, it would be like a contractor's yard where you have. So it would be, it would be like a contractor's yard where you have materials that, that you can't return necessarily, but are likely to be used again. And so they go and, they go in our yard. And, and, you know, most of the property, there's like thirteen acres of maple trees that are, that make a nice sugar shack kind of place, you know, up on the hill. Uh, there is a fairly good sized excavated place where Mr. Gokee was getting, taking fill out. And I assume that most of it was used to balance the site in front where the house trailer is. And, um, we, you know, we, it would look much nicer if I eventually could fill that in. Or, you know, it's kind of just a big cut where he got into some sand and gravel for clean fill, I believe. And I think that he probably at one time stripped off most of the top soil in the field because it's real thin soils. Um, but that's just another place where we were probably, I have, I have a farm and that's a great place for manure and try and, you know, try and build that back up. It's a nice property back there. Um, you know, at some point in time, it's zone commercial. So, you know, I suppose it's possible that we may put up a building there some years down the road, but I have no plans for that now. The buildings that come with the property are adequate for the uses that, that my business requires this time.
What about that vacant building? It's all boarded up, but.
Um, you know, I mean, I, I would probably turn that into a rental at some point in time. And we talked about maybe it being an office, but our office is much closer to town. And so I, I wouldn't imagine moving our office over here unless, unless, you know, we, our landscaping, we're not general landscapers. We just landscape my own construction sites. We don't get landscapers on time. And so we don't have a huge landscape operation. Um, you know, I don't want to foresee too far down the road, but if something more took off, maybe that would become an office for our landscape operation or something. But right now I haven't, don't have plans for it, but I would, I could see it becoming either a rental or a office or something.
And you said you had more than just the three, um, should we call them, lots for, for, uh, mobile homes?
Yeah, there's eight lots there, four mobile homes, um, there were just five of them that, you know, there's a water riser and sewer. It's all set up when, when it was built, was built for those to have, for the five lots. There's kind of a road that, the road that goes diagonally back there for mobile homes to be on that lot as well.
Were you thinking about extending into that?
Oh, we could probably use that for mobile homes.
Well, no, I mean, as far as rentals go.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Yeah. Cause there's, there's a debate on whether this is grandfathered in or not. Because basically Mr. Gokee used that for, for his upkeep of the, the trailer park when he had it. And then when he sold it, it kind of went by the wayside, but I did see that there were the three that looked like they were inhabited. And then if there's more, I guess that would be something to consider also. Are there any questions that, I don't know if it's popping up?
How many employees do you have?
What's up?
How many employees do you have?
Uh, totally. Right now we have, I mean, twenty-eight employees.
So you're a pretty good sized operation.
Yeah. And the lots, the trailer park lots there are rentable as they are. You can own the trailer and rent the lot, or we can put a trailer and rent the whole thing. I'm not sure what I would do at this stage, but the lots are there and rentable. So they haven't, you know, technically been abandoned. They haven't, infrastructure was never removed or, you know, it was set up for rentals, whether he ever rented them or not, I, I don't know. But they're there and set up and approved for rentals under that.
And those, those go into the common wastewater and water system?
Yeah.
Okay. I guess you might have to, if you did that, if it's connected to the other trailer park, you might have to have some sort of a agreement to.
Well, we've already, we already took care of that when we, when we separate, when he sold, trailer park owner bought from Mr. Gokee and sold me these five acres. And the health department had us separate the, so we have our own septic tanks. All of the field was on the other side of the, the split. And so the health department had us put the, a, a field big enough for our projects on our property. So the tanks now dump into the field that's on our property.
When you, um, I saw that you actually went to Eagle, the, the state controlling the, the Stanley Creek issue, which is big in a lot of our minds, and how to keep that from, uh, from deteriorating. Uh, when, when you're talking about moving stones or whatever in the back area, did you get a, a feel for how much you can use that for and how, how often or whether you need to, uh, go back to Eagle and get an extra permit or, cause I know there's, there's issues like the Dollar General down here in Honor that was a big, big hoopla there. It was a big mess. So they, they talked, I saw the letter that he put out, but it didn't really go into future use.
Yeah. So my, I, I initially called them to make some kind of assessment of the, of the berm. That's a big culvert that the creek runs through and there's a berm over the culvert. And, uh, he, he said to use it as I was proposing, uh, we went back, he saw the gravel pit, he saw how much material had been moved, you know, out across that, across that berm. And he said there was no, would be no permit required to continue to use it as such, you know, his inspection of it. Um, he didn't, he didn't see an issue with it, but he said, he had the caveat, he said, I'm not civil engineer, so I can't really speak to the, uh, structural integrity of the berm. And so in the permit, I also included a letter from Sorenson Engineering. And he is a civil engineer who I hired to come out and make an assessment of the, the berm. He measured, measured the width at the bottom and the width at the top and took a sample of the soils that the berm was made out of and concluded that there was no damage or no danger, uh, to the creek by, you know, by crossing it, um, using it as, as it has, has been used. It's quite a wide berm. It's a big structure and there's no, it's not like a trestle or anything like that. It's a, it's a, just a big culvert with massive dirt across it. And the road's at the top of that, of that berm. And so I included the engineer's letter for, you know, I'm, I appreciate that beautiful little creek and definitely I would want to have, have the safety of that preserved.
I think if, if you do in the future, um, think of building something there, if we go through and everything passes muster, then you're going to need a, another special permit for that, especially.
Building permit, yeah.
Well, not just a building permit. Um, we'd have to pass muster with Eagle again, just because it's going to be used more.
Yeah. Eagle, he said if, um, he said if we were wanting to widen it, uh, or change it structurally, then that would require a permit.
Yeah. Okay. Um, anything else you want? Well, citizens are going to start asking some questions. You can direct that, the questions to us and we'll deal with the answers and talk to Mr. Norris again. So, um, we're open for discussion. Teresa, I know it's your hand. Was that right away?
I have some trouble questioning you.
Go ahead.
Uh, number one, uh, Mr. Norris was at a former planning commission meeting. I'm sorry, just lost my train of thought here for a second. Where, um, he said he was going to be putting big piles of dirt and estimating a special factor. And he also stated that this mobile home park had a construction operation. It did not. That, um, so the whole road and the bridge, all of that was even built before Mr. Gokee that owned the trailer park lived there or owned it. His parents built that. Um, and it's over forty-five years old. And I don't know if it can hold the fire truck. I don't know what he can ask to do back there, but I can't imagine that it can be built for the rest. And and I'm concerned about the noise of the equipment because it's never been operated in that since the split. All of the dates that he stated were pre-split, so none of those matter. At the split in two thousand and eleven, the only thing department that he owns or uses for his office is left rent. Yes, he had cars in there. Mr. Norris stated in his last meeting that the tools were actually the Southern LLC people that owned the trailer park because they were using it as a, they were going for a perm, but they didn't get, come here and get a, a special use permit or anything else. It's never been used as a construction site at first. And I do think it would be incredibly noisy. You already have one construction yard that was branded without a special use permit that you can hear at seven o'clock in the morning, the heavy equipment operating inside your home.
I mean, where you can speak to the construction equipment. I, I, the construction equipment that was in there. You're, you're not, you're not actually doing construction there. You're, you're storing your equipment there and, uh, maintaining it. Is that, is that my understanding?
Right.
That you, there may be, I guess, there may be equipment going back if you're storing things. And that's, that would be a concern about the noise. Just a moment, please.
You can speak to the state of, what was in there.
Um, hey, my name's Trent Sims. Um, I was listing agent of property and then also helped facilitate a transaction. And, and Mr. Norris, uh, was, was interested. And I guess I just wanted to start with, you know, how I, uh, you know, list a property and, and make sure that I'm properly listing that property as zoning and so on and so forth. So, um, you know, first, Inland Township does not cooperate with, with the Spire North Realtors as in B S N A. Um, I cannot, you know, log on to, uh, the tax rule and see, um, the, the, the class of the property, the zoning of the property. So, uh, you know, before I listed the property, I checked, you know, um, the, the zoning map, which clearly identifies this parcel as commercial. And then second, I reached out to the zoning administrator and the zoning administrator provided a, an email stating the class, uh, you know, versus zoning and how it's zoned commercial. Um, so I guess, you know, just the, the allowed commercial uses, you know, pop in my zoning, you know, supersedes any, um, any of the potential, you know, noise, whatever that makes, you know, it's, it's a property purchased to be utilized with the intended allowances that, that the property offers through zone. Um, you know, when selling this property, there, you know, in the short amount of time that I sell an LLC on this property, there's no way they could, um, you know, accumulate the amount of construction equipment and or, uh, you know, uh, tools to be able to uphold park. Uh, I'm sure we have photos that I can bring my listing photos and see that. Um, so all the information that I was able to gather from the township and directed by the township, how to market this property. I even had a commercial sign on the road for six months. Well, I'm sure a lot of people in this room drove by and, and saw that sign. And in no point in time did I ever get a phone call saying this is not commercial. Um, I'm sure even from, you know, the, the board members and, you know, um, of the township and planning commission could have seen that sign and never got a phone call. Uh, so, you know, I'm here to, um, one, you know, protect my reputation of adequately marketing a property in, in its, um, actual zone, um, use. And then also on behalf of Mr. Scott Norris.
You had a question back there.
Well, I was hoping I could give some clarification just from my own personal thoughts, but we've got to throw off your pictures that you have. I didn't have my handout for some reason. But, so the way I understand it, this is the property lying here that you're, that you, that you purchased and you're planning on doing the work on, right? I happen to live in White Vista right here, which you can see there's a tree line, a forest over here. Uh, from my place, yes, I can see the creek and, uh, this road going back over here. Uh, there are people that, it's one of the nicer mobile home parks, uh, in all Traverse City. Uh, and we've got residents in here that have lived there over thirty years. So I guess my only question, I just wanted to clarify a couple of things. The way I'm understanding it, you're not going to make any changes. Most of the, the work you're going to have is going to be down in the section here, right? And there's going to be no changes to the wooded area, which you see also surrounds the park area of the, uh, of White Vista there and the heavily wooded area up here. Uh, give you an example, the people who live here, they're paying a higher rent for the lot. Why? Because of this here. I don't necessarily have any objections to everything that you've proposed today, but it's important that we maintain this area the way it has been for the residents of this community here. The park for the children, for example, uh, the property values of the homes over here in this section. So the way I understand it, you're not going to do anything to that right now. But what kind of guarantees might there be that it's not going to be cut down and bulldozed down, down the road?
I don't know how to answer that.
Well, we're, right, right now what he's asking for is construction, storage, and perhaps some, some materials in the back. We haven't heard anything about cutting down trees, as a matter of fact.
Oh, no, I haven't either.
So as a matter of fact, if he does come back to say, okay, I want to build something or another back there, he's going to have to come back for another special use permit, which we do the same thing again here is to talk over what's going on and making, making the, the, your comments even more.
But you understand my concern and I'm sure the concern of many people here.
Could I live in Traverse City?
Yes. Do I want to? No. And why? I have eagles that fly over my home for heaven's sakes. Uh, it is quiet. Do I hear the heavy trucks on thirty-one and nearby, uh, operations? Yes. So my fear of having a, like back here is intensified because of that. But I just heard about this on Saturday, I think it was. Uh, and I'm here because I hadn't even been notified of it. I understand the reason why. Um, because the property owners were notified of it and never passed that information on to us, but we're actually living here. So I just wanted to express my concerns and my fears of what may happen in the future. Everything you've said tonight sounds reasonably reasonable to me. I'm not dead setting it, but I do get concerns about, well, we say yes to this now. And then four years down the road, oh, let's, let's expand this a little bit. Let's do something more with this over here. Those are the things that concern me today.
What's going to have to happen too is a long, hard look at the creek.
Yeah, that's, that's your real concern.
So I hope you understand why I'm here at least.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Yes?
It was Paul. I was going on a township, you know, in my township. Well, when I was here with the planning commission here, you know, I don't know how many months ago that was, three months ago, four months ago, pretty good. I thought he, he basically wanted to store, uh, just rock and gravel and piles out there. I didn't know about you were going to store machinery out there. And if you're going to bring in topsoil, um, is that going to be stabilized out there in those areas? But my, my, my thoughts now, um, if you're going to be bringing other machines out there, living out there, you know, I, that's not what I thought you were doing originally.
I didn't, I didn't hear that you were going to put machines out.
Well, I mean, machines would, would preferably be stored up. You know, there's no power back there to plug things in in the winter. Those, yeah, at the road. But, um, you know, when we park, uh, um, sometimes to unload boulders, we need an excavator back there to unload the boulders. If we're going to bring in, uh, you know, some topsoil, I mean, we actually have another job development where there is quite a bit of topsoil. And I would love to dress it, dress this up with that, but we, you know, we'd have to haul it back and dose it around. But the, the, I don't, I think that's not so germane to the special use permit because even if this gets turned down, you know, I can still spread topsoil on my property. I can still cut down trees. It's my property. The, the, whether you grant the special use permit or not, uh, doesn't prohibit me from making, you know, improvements or changes as I see fit, you know, to that property back there. Um, I have no desire to cut down the trees and, and there's a, you know, where the stream is, anything I do within five hundred feet of the stream, I have to get a soil erosion permit subject to the county's oversight on that, whether it's a special use permit issued or you say no to it. Um, so, so the concerns about what So, so the concerns about what might happen down the road, those concerns could be just as valid if I, if I didn't have a property I want to do, you know, something else, you know, to my own property, so to speak. But I, I totally understand, you know, the neighbor, the trailer park wanting the place to be as beautiful as it is, because it's a beautiful spot. So, but yeah, we, I, we, Teresa's is accurate that we, is possible that we would, sometimes we'll have some aggregate that's left over. So it might not just be boulders, it might be a pile of topsoil or a pile of twenty-two A road gravel or something that was just, we had too much delivered to a site, can't return it, so here it goes. But it's typically in our yard is product. The only reason we save product is because we might be able to use it on another job. And I just am looking for a place to store that.
But your intention's really not to store equipment back there, it's storing product, whatever that is.
Okay. So, I'm sorry. So if you do bring topsoil and it is in mounds, is there a way that you have some way of putting the silk fence around it or, you know, you know, wind the downslopes and stuff? Yeah, because of, because of the green, I just thought maybe even with the noise, is there, is there maybe some days in a week that you could move those trucks in and out of there? It doesn't have to be seven days a week, right? Is that...
I mean, you're on, you're on an highway. I'm not, I'm not going to make more noise than that's going down on a highway.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not sure. I don't know what noise it's going to be, but, but still, I was thinking, you know, if you did start bringing mounds of things, I mean, how are you going to stabilize that? You know, I think even if you stay five hundred feet away, I think you should still do something. Even if you, even if you put topsoil and, you know, spread it all over the, the open area there, you would have to get something planted in it to hold that soil in. So it doesn't have to be just spread grassy, you know, pasture seed or, or some flowers in there. But, you know, I just wanted to, just so this would make everybody happy, you know, you know, some plan what's going on, so.
Yeah, I mean, when we, when we do do topsoil, we always use what's called roadside mix. It's a mix of wildflowers, fescues, bluegrass, so that the, the fescues have deep roots, grows fast, it's pretty, doesn't typically require irrigation. And that's why it's called roadside mix, it's what county uses alongside the road or construct contractors mix. Yeah, when we're, when we're wanting, obviously, the sooner we get, we're going to spend the money to spread topsoil, we want to get something growing on because that continues to build the soil and just spread out.
Well, we've, our warm season grasses are actually going to be a deeper root system, so that can get up to six foot. That was, you know, that's going to hold the soil a lot better and, you know, it'll still grow in the sand, so.
I did drive back there because there was a concern about use of this and I saw very little tracks going, but it's pretty flat there. There's an awful lot of untended, what I would call road gravel, which is a mix of gravel and sand. So, yeah, I think if, if there was some planting, if you, as you were discussing, putting some sort of a plant material in your, in that area, I think that would certainly help with any potential runoff, but it's, it's pretty, it's been dug out quite a bit. So it's, yeah, it's, it's a, it's been used. So, gravel piles, I think those were left over from Mr. Goke. I'm not sure what he was using that material for, but you can tell he dug in until he got to that vein of gravel for, you know, his roads or something, I don't know.
I use that term loosely. There was a hand, yes, sir.
Hey, come, yeah, come on.
Oh, sure. Your name is?
Dan Reed. I'm going to use that same map if I may.
That's good.
Mr. Norris, I have, I have, but two, I, first of all, I respect everything you said about it's my property, I can do whatever I want. I feel the same way, that's what I did with mine. But I had really two concerns and one of them goes along with like the gentleman back there in the back just did.
Did you show that to the commission here?
Yes. In two thousand and eighteen, my wife and I bought property off of Fuehens. We're at the end of the cul-de-sac on Algonwood. This is basically my corner market right here. My piece of real estate butts up to this, this section here. You're aware of that section because Mark Grabich purchased it and was going to turn that into some residential community. He approached me personally about putting in an easement on my property so he could access one spot, that's all he has, but all he could do on it is one spot. I said, no, I don't want that. My wife and I bought this piece of real estate in two thousand and eighteen, after I got out of the Coast Guard, we, we wanted to settle down in here. We've lived in Lake Anne prior to that, sold that, and we moved into town for a while and realized that that's out of the question. We came across this piece of property. We looked at it, immediately fell in love with it. It is, and one of the things that we fell in love with right off the bat was the peace and serenity of back there. And I said, Gil, the only way this is going to work is that we buy two lots. So I basically have six acres. You can, you may, but you cannot imagine the wildlife that is in this section of property at the end of that, what was going to be a sub, all the way up to the back of my house. It is absolutely incredible. So my two concerns are this. One, that is something, the ecosystem in here is something that we really, really want to protect. The subdivision that I live on gets to enjoy all that wildlife. They're like, they're like our tamed animals, they're like our pets. They roam through our neighborhood, the adjacent neighborhood, which is the one over here. My next door neighbor, Rick, he butts up against this section of your property. Although my property does not butt there, my concerns are, like I just told you about, protecting this natural wildlife habitat is extremely important. Along with that is that Stanley Creek. That is a pristine creek that runs year round. No way do any of us want to see that altered in any way. That would be devastating. My second concern is this, I have walked this property all over when I first bought our property. And I could tell right away that at one time this was used for some kind of excavation or something. We live, Fuehens Road is exactly one mile, exactly one mile off of thirty-one. My street is exactly a quarter mile long and I'm at the tail end of that. So theoretically, I have a three quarter of a mile buffer zone. When the winds, when there are no winds or when the winds are out of the south, I will occasionally hear a big old semi truck jake brakes. I'll hear a loud Harley Davidson motorcycle. But that's rare. If the winds are on any other direction, I don't really hear much, but that's on thirty-one. This is considerably closer now. And if you plan on using heavy equipment back here, I'm going to have to listen to that as long as you're using it. I know it's your property, but the reason my wife and I bought that property was because of the peace and serenity back there and, God forbid, we don't want that altered. We love it. The back of my home faces this property. My deck is facing the back of this property. Heavy equipment, I'm going to have to listen to it all the time you're using it. That means me sitting out on the back of my deck trying to enjoy that peace and serenity is going to go right in the toilet. So that's why I'm here, because I would really rather not see this gravel pit or any variation thereof that's going to require heavy equipment. It's just going to spoil everything that, you know, that I was looking forward to for the rest of my life at this piece of property. So, I mean, that's really all I had to say, that's why I'm here, because those concerns, those are two very, very important concerns for me. And I'm sure it is for, now, I'm sure that people up here, they got to put up with that road noise, I get that. But all the people in my subdivision and the next door subdivision, they, they don't hear any more than I do. This will change all of it. Really all I had to say.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, sir.
Hi. My name's Tom Himmer, I live on the other end of Algonwood at Fuehens. As most of you probably know, there is a county, some sort of county pit there. There's nonstop trucks in and out there every day of the week, all summer long. The hell needs banging, front end loader banging, all kinds of heavy equipment in there, nonstop, eight hours all day long. I just want you to realize how much noise potential having on your neighborhood. They start before eight o'clock, we're retired, a lot of us are retired, we sleep in after eight o'clock. We get woke up every morning in the summer by heavy trucks going in and out of there, heavy equipment banging, tailgate flopping, front end loaders banging on trucks, just steady all summer long. So long you ought to be aware of what the potential noise is going to be if this turns into something like county has back there now.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes?
Well, you all know me. My concern is for the Stanley Creek and the ponds, you will see those two ponds there. And when my kids were growing up, they fished in those ponds. And I guess you've got your permits, but my concern is the, the leaching of stuff into Stanley Creek, which actually runs down and goes into the plat and eventually into Lake Michigan. So I guess you've had your permits from the Environmental Protection Agency, but my concern is that that part of the landscape will be changed or that something will be leached into the waterways or the ponds or, I mean, that's been there since I've been here. And, and that's like I said, the neighborhood, kids used to fish there. And if you take away the trees, another thing that's going to happen is they used to fish trout out of there, believe it or not. When you take the trees down, you won't have trout because the water gets too warm. They have to have the cool water in order to spawn. So my concerns are about the wet, the wetlands back there. Because if we do away with our wetlands, eventually it's going to do something to all of our water wells and other things, but I guess you went ahead and done things to protect that.
Yeah, well, and just to be clear, I haven't, there have been no permits required because I haven't, I haven't requested to make any changes to anything. And so, so if I were to do anything within five hundred feet of that creek,
Yeah.
then, then I would have to apply for a permit from Renzie County soil erosion and then they would regulate what I can and cannot do. But I'm not, at this time, I hope I didn't make it sound like I'm planning on going in and cutting down all those trees, I'm not. And, but anything that, that I would do within five hundred feet of your side of that stream, I would have to get a permit so that, so that the government can have oversight about what, what is being done to make, just for that very reason, to protect the watershed.
Yeah, so you're not hauling stuff in there to leach into the water?
What we would be hauling in would be, would be the topsoil, coming and going gravel, it'd be inner, inner aggregate and, and mostly it's going to be boulders, stones, landscape, it's landscape material. There's, yeah. So, yeah, that, there's, what could leach and...
Well, I don't know.
Like fertilizer, like a pile of fertilizer or something.
Yeah.
We don't, we don't do that. Farming or something maybe.
Some topsoils from even people's yards might have pesticides and you're going to kill whatever bugs are in your yard or whatever. So my concern is for keeping that the way it is now. Because there's, there's, there's three other creeks, if you're from the city or whatever, Creek or Creek or however you're going to say it, but there's three other ones in our township that actually run down and connect with Stanley Creek. They all kind of come in and, and flow into Stanley Creek down there. So I'm just interested in preserving the water.
Sure. It's, it's interesting, as a side note, when I had the eagle there, I was curious, they show, these maps, all the maps show ponds down there and, and there are no ponds, it's just the creek goes through. And there, there are these cement structures that you could put, could put boards in and, and so, I don't know, it's Mr. Goke, but he would dam it up and create a trout pond there and actually stocked it and kids would fish in it. I, I heard this from the, from Eagle. And I've since heard it from other people that worked for me, it's, oh, yeah, I knew Mr. Goke, we, we'd go fish over there when we were a kid. But Eagle, Eagle put an end to the, the damming, it can't, it can't be dammed anymore. Structures are still there, but the, all the boards have been removed. So, so what we essentially have there now is the creek and there's, there are wetlands down on either side of the creek. But you'll probably never see ponds like that.
Well, if I could say one more thing about that, for the last three years, we've had kind of a drought and even the lakes are two feet down. And so that's probably why you're not seeing part of what used to be there. Because even on Lake Dubinay and Nutley, people that I know that have houses down there have complained to the D N R people because they said the dam is failing. Well, my son, the woodsman, said it's not the dam that's failing, there's not enough water to go through the dam. And so they, the D N R has been down there and they've checked that and checked that. So we are kind of in a drought condition where, you know, water's kind of important this year and will be in the future. So maybe those will come back even not being dammed up, you know what I mean? So my concern about the water.
So I've lived on my road for, we go to our property for over thirty years that runs parallel to this park, we line a little man in between there. And we have watched them improve our road by the county and they came out and they had, I'm sure Eagle commented, said he called on the creek, but we watched major ruts every time there was rain and all of that washed out under the creek. And Mark Fabrick built his little road that is right behind us, over up here, there too. He had building department there, he had Eagle there and everything and huge runoffs of stuff and gravel or went into the creek. Because it wasn't ever done right. So, the soap thing, and I think also because they couldn't control where the, when it rained heavy, they can't control where it flows off to, where you're back there moving the things around the creek. So it's a very big concern for the creeks to be protected.
Well, I know there's discussion about doing some of the culvert on Holbert and the fact that it's got to be improved and that it's because of the cost, it's been pushed down the road, so.
Well, they already improved it, it was smaller. When they improved it, like we ended up with three foot deep ruts all the way down our road.
Anybody else? Yes, sir.
Yes, Kevin Kabelski. I got two questions. Here in the packet that Mr. Norris provides, it says that it's on the, the property is currently on the tax rule was R one, but it's zoned commercial.
Yes.
Can the board speak to why that is done that way?
Well, yeah. The problem with the, we have three different things here. We've got the, the zoning, which our zoning map shows it commercial. We have our master plan is showing that that area is supposed to be rural residential. And we've got our assessor who has assessed it as residential. The key portion of this is what does our zoning map say? And that says it's, it's commercial. We used to be a joint planning commission, joint zoning administrator with Homestead Township. We have a record of the split that happened in two thousand and eleven and that was done through Homestead. And for whatever reason, there's, there's no record of it changing from commercial to residential, because it was commercial when it was all one before the split. Where, where that fell apart, I don't know. We haven't been able to find the documents to really say, yes, it was changed to residential.
Now, according to your... Now, according to your tax assessor, he said that he classed it as residential because of the way Mr. Goke was using it, but it was still zoned commercial. So that the class and the zoning don't have to match, according to your tax assessor. So that's how... I think that's why it's kept to be zoned commercial, but he put it on the tax...
There should have been follow-up on it. It didn't happen.
So what does probably further? You know, because I help a lot of people buying some land. I know that there's been a couple of parcels in question. It goes zoned commercial, relatively close to this. I mean, would it be in the best interest of the township to take the zoning map off the website and not advertise it as commercial? Because that's where I go. And it's information that's provided by the township. So when you have somebody making hundreds of thousands of dollars investment into that township based on what the township is providing, it becomes very gray, very completely...
We are working on that. We're actually going through the master plan. And then we're gonna be looking at the ordinances and permitting.
I've had my integrity question. And I won't name any names, but I did get a phone call asking how and why was this property as commercial? It was very unnerving.
I asked why it was listed on the website as residential. It was listed online for sale as residential property. That's what I asked you.
Okay, so it was Teresa gave me a phone call at 6:30 on Tuesday. Yeah, so the reason why I listed both residential and commercial is because me as a real estate agent, I'm trying to bring the highest and best offer to my seller. So advertising it as a residential piece to where you can continue to run out, you know, these rentals to offset your income to buy a piece of land. Sure. And also advertising it in its true use form as commercial to attract potential buyers like Mr. Norris. It's what you do as a real estate professional.
Well, in our township, you can have residential on commercial property. So it's a balancing it.
My question did not mean to question integrity at all. It's the way I searched for it to be listed as residential, I can't find it. I didn't guess. If you knew for sure which way it was listed because according to the county and building permits that were drawn on that property once the split was, it was zoned residential. And the reason why there is no residential paper now is there's a 10-year retention on splits. So it didn't have to be kept. Coincidentally, all the meetings from the years where that was done was not maintained at all by either Homestead or for us. So we don't have any of them. And you're right, we do need some better records. I did talk to a lady who lives in the Villa Park, who lived with her today it started. And she lived half of that life in there with Mr. Goke. And she said, absolutely, he changed it to residential. That's not the question here because we don't have a lady standing on legally to hold up to that. So it's a loophole for Mr. Norris. But I do think that we should... Seriously, I just have one more thing.
Time out, time out. Don't accuse Mr. Norris.
No, I said it's a loophole for him that he gets to have it as commercial on our end. I don't mean he did anything wrong. I mean, we did. I'm sorry if I made that problem. Yeah, I'm sorry. I'm upset because I just feel like this has a chance of going through and we listened to the place that they allowed on Mr. Baber's property with no notice. And we too are all day long hearing noise from that. And I know it's just gonna be worse. And like the... And the creek. There's a lot of reasons not to. And once we give him a special use permit, am I wrong to believe that he can't use a full part at any time then for what we gave him for?
We can put some restrictions on that. If this goes through, we can talk to him about our understanding of what he's presented. And if we find that it's gone beyond that, then we, as a township, can come back and say, "Time out, let's talk about this. This was not our understanding. And the special use permit was issued for this specifically." And so we can talk to him about what's going on, whatever that may be.
I got another question. You said that piece of property is 65 acres? Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. I'm just wondering, where on that 65 acres would you plan to put these piles of stuff you keep that keep coming off?
Well, it would be up in this open area. I don't particularly want to take down any trees, so. It's pretty, when you come through the road, kind of break out into this open platte area, and so it would likely be here. This seems like a nice meadow area that's just been denuded of its topsoil. But I'd like to see that back to pasture. This is really a nice maple stand. So I would say somewhere in this area. And then, you know, if we can start to put... Right now, there's a big cut. And so, you know, we would be making some noise to fix that. But right now, it's just a big ugly gash in the ground. If we were gonna start to put this back together, I would say the area that we're projecting to use to stockpile, you know, stuff or if we were to, I don't know, park our plants or something back there. I mean, we do have...
Scott?
Scott? Why can't you use that lower right area?
This is...
This is gonna be closer to the creek, so. I understand. I'm just trying to say, because you're staying 500 feet away this way, what, like, is there something you can do here?
Oh, I could...
Yeah, I mean, this is just the closest.
I know, but what I'm saying is, this area here, if you left it alone, you could maybe re-plant some stuff in there. But I'd like to see this go back there. There's no other place over here you can do that? Well, I mean, I can do it anywhere here, I guess, but if I do... I don't really, it doesn't really matter to me. If it was here or here, there's probably people that own property here.
Yeah, I don't know, I don't know. I don't know how heat this is from here to here.
I think the 500 mark kind of runs along there. And just because it's within 500 feet doesn't mean that I couldn't hard plant there.
No, it just means that I'm subject to the county's soil erosion.
Yeah, well, that's why this is a pretty flat spot.
Yeah, well, what I'm saying is, you still do a buffer of certain plants here. And then, you know, if you do come through here, and then if you do like in a line this way, you know, I think it'd be, you know, these are like staging areas. You gotta have yourself a way to turn around in there. But this might keep that area quiet for the people up this way, you know.
The other issue is, this is quite a bit higher than this. It's kind of steep, so you're gonna get up there, you're going up. Oh, yeah, that's not too steep there. If I tried to go this way, I wouldn't... I don't think I could navigate that.
Yeah, I'm just trying to fix, you know, how to save that area from the noise. If there was a way you can use this area, well, I'd see it, so. And then you talked about Artesian Spring in here as well. So I don't know exactly what that's at right now, but...
I've been able to say that.
You're in here, it's more wet.
Yeah.
On the creek here, this is quite a steep hill. But I think if you had a buffer or something, that's gonna hold back any stuff that's going down. Yeah, that's gonna help too. So, I mean, just above that, you know, so it's actually gonna really be something that can help, you know. But so you said, there's no way for you to come up in here.
Get a tree sign like that, get up to that elevation. Right now, there's just kind of a road here.
Yeah, well, all right. Scott, before you leave the map, can you show me where your vacant slabs are?
Well, they're right along this road here. There's like one, two, three, four, five lots.
Okay.
If you drive over there, you'll see these round risers where the water and sewer are covered. So that trailer would back over those and then the hookups would be... They're right along this stretch right here.
Anything else?
I got one question, Scott, that you were pointing at that map. I'm hearing terms, construction and land, all in the same perfect. What would be your hours of operation? Sundays a week?
No, I don't work on Sundays. Mostly not Saturdays. And most of the work that we're doing is on people's property. So... But could a truck roll in there at 6:00 o'clock at night with a load of something? It's possible that that would happen. No, I don't like paying overtime, but we do, especially in the summer when we're trying to get work done, so.
Yeah, it sounds like this is not going to be a nine-to-five operation there. It sounds like you're gonna be elsewhere in potentially bringing stuff back. Other than, again, coming back to the shop area, you might have your equipment in there and doing maintenance and whatever.
Exactly, that's a perfect building for it. There's electricity there. Most of the big trucks are diesels. We plug them in in the winter. And so that's where they should be. They're up front, close to the road, accessible to electricity and water and all of that. But if there were pieces of equipment parked in back, it might be like our front-end loaders. You'll, if you drive over there now, you see a snow pusher out front, you know, when we change implements. Now, if I said I wanted to keep it neater up front or something, maybe we would put that snow pusher back there. But, you know, mechanical equipment, you don't want to just go park it in the field. It's horrible for it, you know, if it's got an engine in it. You want to buy a facility where it's being covered or taken care of.
Any questions? Anything else? Sorry.
My name's Mary, so I also have a lot of thoughts. I'm also concerned about the noise, but I keep hearing about mounds of stuff bringing in things. He is saying, "Yeah, they're good, not..." But when I think of landscaping, eventually you're gonna have mulch. You're gonna have fertilizer. This is all part of when I think of these landscaping materials. And you say you're gonna put restrictions on it. But once he has this, and he has some fertilizer, he's gotta put something there. He can do what he wants to to dispossess. You can dump that out there as well because it's part of the umbrella of landscaping. He says no now, but what happens to it?
I mean, we don't store fertilizer. That goes on the property. It doesn't... It'd be like a farmer.
It could be dying mulch. They all are under the same umbrella as I see as landscaping.
Could be mulch.
And there's dye in that mulch, which can be... Smell, then you'll come get odors. Yeah. So you're saying you can put restrictions, but there wouldn't be a restriction because that still falls under what he said he's gonna use it for?
Well, yeah, I mean, I used to live a 135-year-old farmhouse on five acres and our next-door neighbor farmed around us and he brought in a pile of chicken manure. And then this equipment broke. So we were stuck with that for a month. But we were in that area, you know, the farm land. So, yeah, okay. Certainly, I would hope that there would be some judgment there, realizing that if something like manure is showing up, that it'd be stored somewhere less invasive. But I don't, yeah, that's kind of, well, dairy do, I don't know. But, you know, some of the things that we're talking about here, if he's got fertilizer, leaving fertilizer out in the open diminishes that fertilizer, so I guess I...
But there's different forms. I mean, it could be liquid in a tank if you have any leaks. See, there's a whole umbrella of things that can fall, excuse me, under that category of landscaping stuff. Keep running that word, "stuff." It could cover a lot of things and he would still be allowed to do that because that's what he said he was gonna use it for.
Well, we can certainly restrict that. And then...
You say that, but you didn't have to restrict because he was approved for that.
If you saw barrels out in the backyard and we saw it in his property and you know we've approved that with restrictions, I'm sure you'd probably be the first one to phone call the township and say, "Something's not right here." And I know our zoning administrator with the company that's doing all the noise, he was very concerned about the amount of material that was being stored on property and concerned that it was extending over the property. And I know we went out and talked to him to get it straightened out. And that's part of what our job is, to make sure that if there's restrictions, that it's advised to.
Then the damage is done.
Well, if you see barrel out there and you're concerned, you know, it takes a while for a barrel to decompose or start leaking or something. I'm sure we would hear about it. And, you know, maybe our zoning administrator will do a quick check. Because, you know, he was actually the one who talked about the big pile of dirt because it was approved before he was on board, became an ass me. I wasn't on the board at that time either, so I didn't know. So the best thing to do is go knock on a door or kick some dirt around and find out. So that's part of our job. You know, we don't want that. Absolutely, we don't want that.
I think the noise is a big concern, honestly. And I think like Ian was saying there, you know, if he's gonna work in that back corner of the property, now you just lower his property value unless you try to show his house, there's no noise going out. So everybody that's right around there, property value is gonna be lowered by the constancy. Yeah, we're near 31. I can't hear from one of my houses. Yeah, I can't hear from anyone.
I live further away from you. I can hear it.
Only on certain days.
Yeah, I understand. Actually, I can hear more from the guy that does the on that little strip there than on 31. So, and it's a concern. And obviously, that's a challenge that we deal with. I mean, you know. Anything else? So Mr. Norris did go through the items that we are supposed to talk to about as far as assessment. But before we do that, I did get a letter from Foster Swift, who's our legal counsel. I won't read through the whole thing because it's rather large. I did include that in the package, actually up over here. Basically, because of the zoning map, that takes precedence over the assessing, over the our master plan. Master plan is a guide. Assessing is just trying to find the top value, which I think commercial property is a little more valuable, but that's a debate. But according to our legal counsel, this is not grandfathered in, but it is a special use that is permitted in commercial. Basically, the way we have to look at it. So just to set the precedent of... When I first heard about this, I was concerned, but then I did see our zoning map reading "commercial" and I thought it is a challenge. So I did give you guys... Did I give you copies of this? So going through standards for decisions, 12.4, which is in our zoning ordinance. I see you guys don't have all those. But... What I should do is make copies of this. Well, we'll go through property. The items here, "Property subject to the application is located in a zoning district in which the proposed special use is allowed." Again, our Foster Swift said that because of the zoning map, it is considered commercial. And this is approved for commercial use. "The proposed special land use will not involve uses, activities, processes, materials, or equipment that will create a substantially negative impact on the natural resources of the town..." that will create a substantially negative impact on the natural resources of the township and natural environment as a whole. That is a concern. It's very definitely a concern of, of everybody who's talked about not only noise, but also the Stanley Creek. So I don't know if anybody's got any comments about that. That is a concern. I'm not exactly sure the best way to, to approach that. Other than perhaps we, we make an approval with a subject of planting some hedges or some sort of materials, plant material that would reduce maybe some of the noise to, to the folks to the left hit there. And maybe some towards the top. You were talking about filling in the gash. That is a pretty big gash that I saw. Long term, I mean, this is something that we'll have to develop.
And my, my, I'm not, I'm not asking to make any changes. So there would, you know, be no improvement or degradation of anything. I just kind of, my plan is just to maintain it as it is.
But it's still, there's still the issue with some noise and potential. So I think that's, that's something we might want to note, that the activity is, is the potential issue creating the noise. You may not be changing things, other than hopefully improving some of those areas. The special, proposed special land use will not involve use, oh, sorry, I just read that. The proposed special land use will be designed, constructed, and operated and maintained. So this one, not to diminish the opportunity of surrounding properties. There's no construction, so I don't think this one really applies. The proposed, and if you guys, well, I'm reading through. If you guys have any comments or questions, certainly feel free. The proposed special land use is not place, demand, or places demands on fire, police, or public resources in excess of its capacity, which basically you're not putting any extra buildings in. The buildings are up close. So I've seen that that's not, not an issue. The proposed special land use will be adequately served by public and private streets, water, sewer facilities, and refuse collection and disposed services. Again, it's your own sewer and water system. We really don't have any issues with public straits because you're right on 31. Proposed special land use complies with all specific standards required under this ordinance applicable to it. I think we're going to talk a little more specifically about areas of being able to improve perhaps on the, you know, maybe some planting, maybe some buffers so that some of the noise is diminished and, and potential visual also. Proposed special land use is compatible with the adopted township master plan. Thanks, Paul. We're working on the current master plan, so that, that doesn't necessarily apply there. And let's see, section 13.4. Did we have any questions about those? Oops, thank you. Questions, concerns, thoughts?
No, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Norris, but touched on each one of those bullet points in your.
Right.
Thank you very much.
Yeah. This was from his original, which I thought I had copied. I, I think I emailed it to you guys. But yeah, he did answer, he did answer those questions. Sure.
You were talking about being able to put some restrictions on things. Is that correct?
Yes.
My concern when I hear about landscaping is P5s. Those are rubber chemicals.
Yes.
There are certain materials, eyes and that type of thing. There are certain landscaping materials that are considered, kind of. My, my, my question is, can you restrict any material that be, for example, there's a lot of rubber now, mulch.
Yep.
Rubber mulch, there's, there's four of those, or having P5s. If Mr. Norris starts using it as a storage area, that could leach into trees. You cannot, there are a lot of studies out there right now. The correlation, not a causation, correlation in Parkinson's, cancers, most types of things. I would want to know if we could restrict, if we can be able to put P5s on there. And that would be my biggest concern. I, I think that when you said about crucial use, I don't see any way, if it's blown down, how can you stop? But my concern, to go back to that, about being able to restrict those types of things.
With a, with a special land use, we can put restrictions on. And certainly the concern about leaching and I don't think we'll have fertilizer barrels out there, but we certainly could make sure that request is, is included in, in the, in the approval, that, that it's monitored or it's. And, and I don't know, Mr. Norris, you talk about storing mulch. What kind of mulch is it usually?
Well, we haven't currently ever stored mulch. It's always expensive. It's always getting used up on site. There was one job that the homeowner wanted us to use rubber mulch. And we, I can say educated her about that. It was, it was on a hill off of West Bay. And we ended up using color crushed stones to, she wanted something permanent that didn't have to be. But we steered clear of it for that very reason, because the rubber chemicals are. I'm born and raised in Kitten, Traverse County, and I have no interest in, in that. But I would, I would be all for you putting a restriction that we can't store that kind of stuff on the property. I would, you know, use it someday. Once the property is zoned, I can pass it on, you know, to whoever. And I would be in favor of that kind of restriction personally.
Okay, okay. Yeah, we went through.
Sometimes though, we do, we do grind up trees. And, and we typically use that mulch, you know, oftentimes in woods recurring a lot. And we'll use that ground up stuff in the woods to kind of bridge between the lawn and the woods. Sometimes there's some of that leftover. That might be stored here because it makes good topsoil. It's mixed in with the topsoil. That would be, that would be completely natural materials that are on, on a site, not manufactured product.
Okay. Let's look at this. Prior to the submitting of the application, the site plan approval in application may be, may choose to submit, actually, you've already done that, as far as submitting the plans. The buildings already exist, so we're not adding anything. So there's, a lot of this is a repeat. So, yeah, we've hit all those highlights. Any questions, any thoughts, concerns? We've got two things that we would ask for is to ensure that, that you know, chemicals are stored there in the, any anything that is stored there would be.
Yes, I have a question of Mr. Norris, if I may.
Yeah.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but is it fair to say that the majority of your activity will be elsewhere? Okay.
The, the activity that would be regular there would be, if we're repairing a truck in the garage, they would be working on the truck. Typically, you rotate the fire or mechanic. So it would be, the regular thing that's day to day would be in those buildings out front. The back area would be kind of as needed.
It sounds more like the back area's overflow of product.
For our mechanics, usually, I mean, sometimes they'll start at seven, you know, seven to three. Yeah, I mean, if a truck was loaded up late at night and needed to come to pick up some stones or whatever, they might roll in at seven. Especially in the summertime, you know. Seven to seven, but not, it wouldn't be every day. It's not like an active pit where we're making aggregate. Trucks are coming and getting it, or selling aggregate. Or manufacturing, restoring something that we're hoping to be able to use.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Yes, ma'am.
You mentioned using or that you create that yourself, is that correct? Like through a chipper or something?
Yeah.
Now, would you be doing that on this property? I mean, that's pretty noisy.
That's very noisy.
That's why I'm asking that question. Or can you do that at another site? What is, how does that work?
Yeah, we do it on the site. The trees are coming off because a whole bunch of trees can get turned into this one load of mulch. So it's much cheaper to haul the mulch than to haul a whole bunch of trees.
Yeah.
On the building site and in the back, you're taking any of these trees?
It's easier, easier to move around chipped up wood than logs. It's kind of what it's.
Yeah, I just didn't know where.
A good question.
Would you be doing that back there or loading up, taking out trees like on site?
Yeah.
Can I ask another question?
Yes.
I want people from the trailer park around here.
Well, unfortunately, the, the the ordinance says to send it out to the property owners. And unfortunately, we didn't get the, the names of all the, the folks that are in the trailer park. But I know Therese actually went around and knocked on some doors. And she, she was concerned that the turnout wasn't as much as she was hoping it was.
And they, the process to the, to the actual noise would be.
Yeah, in the future, in the future, we will do a better job to make sure we get the names and addresses of those. So we got, we got half a dozen or so mailings back from, from people that. But I don't, not the trailer folks, other folks. So I will make a motion that we approve the special use permit. And with the caveat of not storing product that could potentially leak there. If, if you have rubberized mulch, do not put it there. Restrict your use in the back. And as far as heavy equipment, which you're planning on doing. And it would be really nice to do some planting around the I think around here, already got some planting and some planting up there of shrubs or something that might grow fairly quickly that will absorb some of this.
It'd be possible for me to meet the zoning administrator so I could walk, walk and decide where he would like to see, you know, planting somewhat like the, where your point is here. I mean, we're getting probably into the weeds. It's quite a steep hill down here. This road's a lot below that. It's a pretty good buffer there. But certainly, this is more, I don't know, maybe you can see over our property.
When I walked in back of my, my corner lot, mine and my neighbor Rick, we can, it's wide open.
Yeah. So, so this would make probably the most sense to plant a buffer there.
Okay.
Now, this goes drops real down the hill. This is probably 40 feet lower than that ridge there. And we go. It's like our zoning administrator.
What am I writing? Northwest corner or south?
The northwest corner of, of the 65 acres.
They got awful lot of trees. Or eyes of adjacent to the county pit.
I, I understand.
400 yards in there and I can hear popping.
Yeah, I, I understand. It's, it's an issue. But if we can get some, some materials that will buffer that a bit. Yes, sir.
Probably a berm would be better than trees. In addition to some trees, you could plant some trees on the berm to diffuse the noise. If you look at Mike over here, the reason he doesn't hear 31, this is a hill, which is that place. So that would be.
I'll let you two work that out. I mean, if you're looking to move some, get rid of some of that scar, maybe push some material around. But I'll let you, you guys work that out.
Whatever. I mean, if we, we can, I'm not sure how big there are trees, but we can get a tree transplanter and block some of the stuff that's out in the field and plant on the side.
That works. Do you have a second? I'll support. Yes.
And about the, in the shop itself, I mean, we would have oils and, and like, we would have product inside the shop, mechanical type of products. And there may be a diesel fuel tank, you know, in there. So, so when we, if we do a blanket statement of nothing, like there would be forever chemicals in some of the mechanical stuff. It would be well contained in the shop, but if we can make an exception for in the shop for, for, I guess it would be for.
Yeah, my, my main concern was the vacant area and the shop is the shop. But, yeah. So we, we've got a motion and a second. We can, we can make another motion on the, this is for the back, back portion more so. So, but we need to vote on this first one. So you can do a roll call.
Nelson?
Yes.
Truex?
Yes.
Calk?
Yes.
Connor?
Yes.
Okay. The next motion would be to allow in the area of the, the maintenance area inside the buildings is to allow whatever materials they need for, for their business, but to make sure it's not flowing out the building. And I'm sure you're not going to do that and dispose properly.
My second then.
Okay. Any further discussion on that?
Truex?
Yes.
Loth?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Connor, yes.
Okay. Very much. Thank you for, for coming in and putting up with our on again, off again.
I appreciate you. Because I, I shouldn't have said my, my dad was the zoning administrator along my township.
Oh, boy.
So anyone that sits in your seats, my hat's off to you because.
I know. We try to, try to do the best we can. So thank, thank you for coming. For those who want to go, we still have a couple of things to talk about here for, for our regular.
And we think of.
Yo, thank you all for coming. I, I hope we satisfied your, your concerns. And I know some are not happy and some are reasonably, reasonably not happy. Let's take a couple minute break. I've got to grab some paperwork and talk to Sarah. Thanks for coming.
I got that on my email.
Do you have it?
Yeah, yeah. I did get to look through some of it. I was mainly concentrating on this.
I did get to look through some of it. I was mainly concentrating on this. Looked all the stuff that you had set up, but I did look through some of it.
This is what I was speaking to earlier to help me, get me up to speed. So this was very helpful.
There's our sign in, sign in G.
There you go. There you go. Okay, you're on. Move back up and running. I know.
Um, okay. Sarah Kirk, for anybody that doesn't, doesn't know me.
Oh, Sarah, this is Ted Nelson.
Yes.
Okay, Jim Brower departed. It's nice because I'm quite right.
He's still with us.
Okay, so this time, I just, um, part of my services for the master plan is to come to your regular meetings and kind of give you updates of what's what happened since the last month. This is kind of my first progress report of, since they've started. So every month that I come to the meetings, I'll have this sort of memo for you. So I'll kind of explain what I've done and then the critical items that are coming up next. So that's what this, this memo is. So I can just go through it pretty quickly. And the task one of the project, we completed the kickoff in, in April. Part of that was, a big part of that was to then send out the planning notifications, which we nailed down the sixteen entities that are surrounding the township and public utilities that are required, sent those out on April thirtieth. All of them went out, except I did get back Platte Township to some reason. I will make sure that she gets that. So all of that's all sent out. And then I also did contact the county equalization department and I've got all the county parcel data. And I started updating your maps, which I think was in the emails, so you saw. I do have the base map completed for the township. I did get the natural resources map completed too. So that is some of the stuff that I've been working on recently. That is, gets, brings me down to phase two of the project inventory, all of that stuff that was in the proposal there. Will be in the master plan. I started working on updating the text of your former, of the current master plan. There's some history and historic photos that will come into that. It's not complete. County demographic data, I got most of that gathered. It's not all in that draft report yet, but that's something that I'll continue to work on over the next few months. Again, uh, community photos, just want to put it out there. A lot of times when you do master plans, you guys have great shots and photos of the community that you want to incorporate into the master plan. Anybody can send them in and I'd be happy to incorporate them. So just know that as we go through. Environmental and natural resource data. Again, I completed that map and that was in the email of stuff that I sent along. It's also on the website. So if we get that website on your inland township website, anybody can start looking through that, seeing these things that have been completed. So.
Are we talking about this? Are we talking about both or?
Both.
Both, okay.
The, I don't know if has anybody looked at the website yet that I sent.
Where would I find it?
It's on the planning notification letter.
Okay, so I have it here.
Yes.
Okay.
And I'll make sure that I email it out again.
And forgive me because.
Yeah, no, I understand.
Just backfilling in for Jim, so.
We're just starting. So I'll also make sure that I'll get that to whoever.
Stepping ahead of Jim, let Matt go.
Whoever does, uh, your township website, oh, we need to just make sure that I get, I can get that to them so that they can publish it on your.
We, we don't know that yet because Jim was doing that. Yeah, Rosemarie seems to have a good handle on that.
She does.
I'm not sure. Yeah, I'm not sure if it's.
I don't know if she wants to take over the whole project though.
Yeah.
Ted?
Good question. It's a good question. Yeah.
I'll just keep following up with you to make sure that, that we get that going on your website. And we can, I can email the link to all of you guys.
That'd be good.
So. Next, the community survey, that's, I'm, that's my big task that I'm going to work on over the next month or so. I did meet with Jim on April twenty-second. We had a good discussion about all this stuff we kind of wanted to see in the community survey. So did have that meeting.
And said, we may want to review that.
Yes.
Make sure we're all in the same.
Yes, absolutely. Well, I'll take the information that he gave to me. Yeah, I'll draft a, I'll draft a survey and I'll, it'll for sure get all of your input before it's finalized. Basically, you have the, the draft of the master plan that I put together. The table of contents is really what's going to organize a lot of this.
Sure.
Same headings that are in the table of contents.
And was Jim Weller on? Okay. We have, uh, on the board of review, I was going to ask about that. Uh, Jim Weller is on that. I'm not really sure.
I think he's on it.
Okay.
Because he already resigned when he went on.
Oh, that's true. So the board of review would have Jim Weller on it also.
Yeah, and that's something that I will definitely, uh, we don't have to do that right now, but I'll definitely have you guys.
Sure.
Reviewing at any time. That's why I'll, I'll give it to you in monthly chunks. And so you can review it per month if you would like. I know it's a lot. Not everybody has time to do that. And you'll also, when we get to the final draft that goes, then goes to that sixty-three day review period, you guys will have that sixty-three day review period to also check any of that stuff too. So their idea is to give you guys lots of time to review as we go through. So that I guess takes to the back of that, um, page, the upcoming tasks to do for the next month. I will, again, I'll get with Platte Township to make sure they get their letter. And then continue to keep them in the data gathering and whether it's any for the list here, these bullet points are the things I'm going to work on. The next month or, it'll probably take me more than the next month, but a big part of this will be reviewing previous plans, reviewing the previous master plan, reviewing all of networks, northwest data. And that will get summarized and get put into a section of the plan. Again, I'll finish the historical data, demographics, transportation. I did find, um, all the trail, your natural resource and trail data from that. That's available from the USGS, um, information. Um, I still need to go through MDOT's information that they have and I can get traffic count data and all of that stuff. So I will be getting that. Infrastructure.
Sarah, would, would the MDOT show like comparison in time? So twenty twenty-five versus twenty twenty and, okay.
Yeah, what they do is they have it listed. Um, it's not every year for every municipality. I haven't had a chance to go and check what they have for inland township. Probably for US thirty-one, they'll have it every year and they don't always have all the data for every, for secondary roads. They might, it might be every five years for some roads, but we'll. I will, I'll get all that information and probably the traffic map will have it the latest, but then we can, in the report, we'll look at the trends. Also, the next big push for me will be able to, to make the existing land use map. And I actually have started that because I did get all the parcel data from the county. So I, that existing land use map is a big part of master plan. So I will, it's my big push to have that. I'll have, probably add that map for your review by the next meeting. And then I'm going to also go through your existing zoning ordinance and get that summary. This meeting was a great meeting for me to, to kind of learn some of the issues that are going on. And so I will look at the zoning ordinance and kind of start making a summary and recommendations and the things that probably may need to be updated, that kind of thing. And then, um, public engagement, again, make sure you have the website link and keep working on the public survey. The big thing that we needed to make some money was the summary on the public workshops because we had one in the contract and then we added the second one. On the original schedule, we had the first public meeting in August. A good, if you add a second public meeting, which we decided to do, a good, um, I would recommend that the first public workshop is like an initial rollout of the data for the public so that they can understand what we're looking at. You announce the survey and then have the public survey open for like thirty days. And then at your second public meeting, it can be a summary of all of that data that you then collected over the last, at the first public meeting in the survey. And then at the second public meeting, um, it would be a workshop to then have the people that come help prioritize some of the findings of that so that then we can prioritize. Use that to set up your action plan that will be at the end of the master plan. So I think, um, a good timeframe if we kept with that one in August would be have the August meeting, have the survey close in September and then have that second meeting in October. I just.
Should we use those meetings in a normal meeting or should we have a special meeting just to focus on that? The initial.
I think you should probably hold it before your, usually they would, it's about an hour long and you would hold it before your regular meeting. So five to six.
Okay.
I think that's a, you guys have your meetings at a good time, six, so it gives people getting out of work at five o'clock, it gives them time to come here. If we advertise it as an open house, they can drop in. It's not like a presentation exactly at this time because then people don't feel comfortable dropping in. That, that usually works well. So I would suggest that.
Conversation, five o'clock? Little kids.
Yeah, well, I mean, if it has to be five because we have to keep six for our meeting, that is what it is.
You can, I mean, you guys can change, change your meeting to or, or you could do it at a different time. I am, I would just be coming to do it whenever, to fit into your schedule. So if you guys would think a six o'clock is a better time. I could do it on a different day as long as the meeting hall is open and just organize all that, so.
Yeah, well, we, we just won't know if there's going to be anything that we need to hold a regular meeting for. If there's something, then maybe we just do it, plan it for the regular meeting and hold the first portion of it for the implementation or the discussion.
Yeah, and I, I guess I just want to make clear, like, these are going to be like a workshop. It's not going to be a meeting like this. It's going to be boards up on the wall, exercises that people can comment, do ideas.
We should probably have a special meeting.
Talk within an hour?
Yeah.
Probably call a special meeting.
Yeah, it's not going to be like me presenting and people asking.
Just kind of show them what's, what we're.
We have to put a notification out.
Yes. Yep. It would be, these have to be advertised in the newspaper and all of that stuff.
Do we need to pick a date now?
I don't think we need to pick it exactly tonight, but if it's in.
It'll be in August.
August and October. It's just, they're coming soon, I guess. So I just want to make sure that.
I'd rather.
I want to make sure that we don't conflict with anything.
Something out there. Let's see.
I mean, Tuesday nights are good nights for me, but do you want to stick with the Monday night? Do it Monday, Tuesday or something. Do it on, keep it on Mondays.
Let's see, August. Our normal meeting would be the eighteenth.
We did the workshop before meeting. Or we could kind of talk, discuss a little bit.
Yeah. With Tuesday, Tuesday, the twelfth? Work, okay?
Right.
Okay, let's, uh. Six o'clock. I will give, uh, Rose. Shout out.
Is it six P M? Yeah.
Yeah, it seems to work pretty well for everybody.
Okay. Yeah, that's, that's absolutely fine.
So we kind of call that a special planning meeting or a special, um, master plan?
I thought we just called them the master planning open house.
Master planning open house, there you go.
And that's how we'd advertise it in the paper. And, um, a similar, do the exact, exact same format, but different, different materials for the second one.
In October. We could set that up in August then.
Yeah.
Yeah, because that's a couple of months. Okay.
Yeah, that's, that's the critical thing. I just wanted to put in front of you tonight so that make sure we got it on your calendar by the time you want it. That was all I really had for you unless you had specific questions on where things are at.
No, it was my big question with calendars. Actually, we're planning on having our finance committee be closely involved because there's, there's issues around what we're going to be asking the citizens for, not just planning, but also what to do with, with the dollars that are sitting there. We currently have a bird's nest up in our, our eve up here. And lots of little birds because it sounds like it's whole community up there when a birdie comes in with bees. So there's some, some issues and you got carpet over here. So there's some, some financial things that we need to, to look at, but we want to find out what, uh, what our citizens want. And I know we did a, a preliminary survey and roads were number one. And we do have a road milling, but maybe we need to augment some of that, find out what roads people want. Albert. Dewan's is going to be. Anyhow, so, um, yeah, some roads.
Yeah, that's what the, the first workshop would be focused on is asking those type of questions. What do you want to get out of the first meeting? Part of the master plan is to form a vision, goals and objectives. So that first meeting, we need to kind of ask some bigger questions, like the questions like, how, how do you see inland township in ten years? Get those type of answers that first, that first meeting, what do you want to see? What land uses do you want to see that? That would be the format, what you want to get out of that first meeting.
Is there anything that we should be doing between now and August for the open ups?
No, for what I need to do between now and then is that's when all of my inventory stuff needs to be done. Because the inventory is what I will present. Like I'll have, I'll have a resource map, I'll have. Because the inventory is what I will present. Like, I'll have an effort resource map, I'll have utilities and the traffic data, and I'll, I'll have all that stuff so that everybody can look at it and see, understand what we have to work on, kind of thing. So. Basically, from now until August, I'll just be completing that inventory process. Actually, I have a, is the next meeting, the June meeting?
On the 19th. Oh, sorry, 16th.
I actually have a conflict with, I have two meetings on that day. I don't think I will have anything major. I'll be at the June meeting.
Send it to me.
Yeah, it'll be, we're the same. I probably have the existing land use map. It'll be anything. I'll send it, and if anybody has any questions.
Yeah, depending on what goes on as far as permitting.
Yeah.
I've talked with a few people, and that actually goes into everything about becoming our fifth member here. So hopefully the rest of people talking to us. All done?
Yes.
Great, thanks. Planning education. Are we, did you guys get clarity up with, with Rose on that as far as?
I'm not going to do that right now. I'm just way too busy, but I mean.
Well, it's, it's okay to, to do it at your own speed.
You have to sign up, like?
Well, yeah, you'll have to sign up for it, but I'm more concerned about having that flexibility that you can do it on your own speed.
Yeah, right now, I'm pretty busy. I mean, if I can push it off, I'd like to do it.
It's, it's important, and, but basically it gives you perspective.
Yeah.
What we do and.
Let's see how things go after this holiday, you know, that's usually, this, it's always a big push to the holiday, and then things, things settle down a little.
Oh, yeah, but if you can do it.
Get started, get signed up.
Yeah.
Get started.
On your, your own time, and that, that certainly makes things.
Yeah, I'll do it.
Well, hands been. That's the way I took it. It was online. And Rose brought up a flyer that was doing it in person. That's, that's an awful lot of time involved, or maybe it was.
It's on, it's on Zoom, but it's every tourist day for three hours.
Yeah, yeah. It wasn't, it wasn't on your own speed. It was, it was a computer generated.
Webinar.
Right, whatever speed works best for you. Some of them are quicker and some, because you didn't have the questions and things, so. So, yeah, see if you were going to talk with Rose.
Yes.
Yeah, so if you.
Okay.
Make sure. This particular one was through MSU, their, their extension, but MTA does have trainings also. So I'm not sure which one, because the one I took was through MSU. Going into new business, everybody knows Jim Brower resigned, because we already talked about that, and Ted Nelson stepped in kindly to fill his shoes and stepped in. And again, John Crimmer was supposed to be here, but unfortunately somebody, some friend of his passed away. So he had to leave. I'm hoping in our June 16th meeting.
Thanks, Sarah.
In our June 16th meeting, I've contacted two others. I actually talked to one other, and the other one left a message, I haven't heard back from her, to see if they come in on the June 16th and we talk to them. Kind of informal interview with them. That way we can get a feel. And again, I'd like to bring one on and then have an associate member to, or two that would be ready to backfill if we need to.
And do they go to the meetings all the time?
That would be their choice.
Oh, they would.
It would be a good, good idea for them to come do some of them, just to see how things. And we're open for public.
Is there a monthly, are you charged for that?
Charged for.
The training?
Yes.
You paid for it?
Township does. I think it's 220. Yeah, something like that. It's well, well worth the township paying for it. It gets into some real basic stuff. Getting into crowd control.
And, and I, I can just say, Alan, that in my former role in the finance committee, it was budgeted for, for the planning commission to, to attend. So there is, there is a bucket available for that particular line item of, of education.
The MSU one?
MSU, MTA.
Yeah, there, we do have funds for training, which is good to encourage whoever wants to do it.
Yeah, good foresight on the, the other planning commissions behalf.
Anything else? Anything else coming before the question? On that, I think we can adjourn. Thank you for coming. Appreciate it.
See you, Mike. Now we just wait for someone else that wants to do something special. Anything on the horizon, Mike?
So, or should land use?
That was the one, yeah. Wow, it is. Yeah, it is. Right.
See ya.
It was wrong, yeah. Could be wrong. So. Yeah, well, nothing you can do. Should we, and I'm just asking, should we have like an agenda spot for our zoning administrator to let us know what's going on or anything?
Well, I would, if there, if there is a special, exactly, why don't you guys?
Oh, you would? Okay. So you don't normally just need a platform to say, here's what's going on or anything like that?
No, I don't think so.
Okay.
Not necessarily. I would, I would present that to you guys more before meetings.
Okay, okay, all right.